To order, join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pam, could you do a roll call, please?
Mayor Keine.
Here.
Alderwoman Clughorn, Alderman Smith, Alderman Donovan.
Eric.
Alderman Bennett.
Here.
Alderman Einmann.
Here.
Alderman Rainey, Alderman Prince.
Sir.
Alderman Steiger.
Here.
Mayor, we have a floor.
Thank you. We'll move to approval of tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, no awards, no personal appearances. Move to the city administrators' report.
So you have the updated report at your seats. The only addition was that Spectrum is going to be making some changes. You may have heard about last night, there was an outage for a little bit as they made some switching changes. That was supposed to affect us more than it has, but there's a couple of things that they're doing to clear up the television station and we're looking at the fiber connection for phones as we move into our construction. So they've got to come out and take a look at both the fiber, mainly the fiber connection in our furnace room. So any questions about anything else that's on there?
All right. Thank you, Happy. Move to staff reports. First up, Assistant Chief Pollak.
Good evening, everyone. You guys have a copy of our muscle report? You guys have any questions about anything on there?
Has there been any movement on the ventilation issue? Ventilation for?
Um, not sure. We have stuff to do it, but I'm not sure where we're at getting it done yet, so.
All right. Still got a lot of mold?
Yeah. A little water in there. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Steve Wilson?
Good evening, everyone. All right, so everybody has my report. I'll touch on a couple of things in here. Still waiting on stuff for the electrical building with BT Electric. Had a 12-inch water main break off of Progress Parkway on Friday. We were able to isolate that one. And isolated that one, ended up getting a, tried to dig it with our equipment, wasn't big enough, had to bring in company with a larger excavator, dig the leak. We got that done on Monday, restored everybody's water, collected samples, everything was returned to normal. One of the other items I want to talk about is the condition of the city's dump truck. We had previously bid for, or budgeted for, a new cabin chassis. The result of our search is about two years out. So, right now, we are down to one dump truck, so the other one's got to go to the shop. It's got a, probably a computer problem. So that'll have to be towed to a mechanic shop at some point to see if they can repair it. So, at this point, locating a new dump truck is almost impossible. So I'd like the board's permission to start pursuing, looking at used equipment.
It's a little odd because you can't really go out for a bid on a used piece of equipment. You've got to get out there and price it, and then work your deal, and then bring it to the board afterwards and say, here's what we want to do. Now, we have a budget limit of $115,000. We'd also hope to have state grant funding to help us offset some of the costs, but that didn't come through. We applied for it, we didn't get it. And as Steve said, we're two, two and a half years out, and that's multiple sources I'm hearing that from, on getting new trucks. So if you approve pursuing a used vehicle, that would be helpful for us to look for a used truck so that we make sure we have three in our fleet, and then we'll have to look at buying a new truck in the future.
We saw a new truck for the fire department before.
We've bought one for the street department before, too. I mean.
We used always used.
It's a no-brainer, so. Move to approve research on a used vehicle.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions on anything?
Thank you, Steve.
I guess maybe, Steve, I'm just, they're supposed to be doing potholes, they're getting a load of hot asphalt next week, so just to let residents know next week, there should be potholes starting to be repaired?
Yes. We will be doing potholes next week, the hot mix, full crew will be out. If anyone has a location of a pothole, feel free to contact us, let us know.
Thanks, sir. Sorry about that.
Any other reports or anything? Okay. At this time, we'll move to a public hearing. First item, the Board of Aldermen, we're going to hold a public hearing to consider a request from Jane and Dustin Martin for a special use permit to allow guest lodging at 495 Jefferson Street in an R1 single-family residential district.
So, yes, as the mayor mentioned, Jane and Dustin Martin applied for a special use permit to operate guest lodging at 495 Jefferson. Application was received on April 20th, filing fee on the 21st, notice mailed to the applicant and the adjoining property owners on April 24th. Police chief and fire chief notified on the 22nd, both returned their letters on the 24th with no concerns. Meeting notice sent to the media on the 28th, posted on the 3rd. The Planning and Zoning Commission met on the 4th and approved the recommendation to the Board of Aldermen by a vote of 503. And I have no comments from any of the adjoining property owners.
Okay. You good with that one? Okay, we'll close that public hearing at 6:08. Move to the second public hearing. The Board of Aldermen will hold a public hearing to consider a request from the Knights of Columbus Council 1037 for a special use permit to erect a four-by-10 monument-type, internally illuminated, changeable sign at 600 Market Street in an R2 general residential district. We will open that public hearing at 6:09.
As the mayor said, received that application on April 20th. Notice of meeting mailed to applicant and adjoining property owners on the 24th. Application was forwarded to the police chief and the fire chief on the 22nd, returned on the 25th with no concerns from either. Meeting notice sent to the paper on the 28th. Planning and zoning held meeting on the 4th, recommended approval to the board by a vote of 503. Bringing us to this evening, and I have no comments from adjoining property owners.
Board have anything? Anyone from the gallery have anything to discuss on that topic? Okay. Thank you, David. We will close that public hearing at 610. Move to public comments. Okay, no public comments. We will move on to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on any of those topics? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
There are a bunch of them.
Okay. Move on to old business. We begin with Bill Number 4559, which is an ordinance providing for the annexation of certain real estate owned by St. Genevieve R2 School District into the city of St. Genevieve existing corporate limits. Is this to approve? I'm sorry, so motion from Alderman Donovan and a second from Alderman Prince. Any discussion? Okay. We have a roll call, please.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Bennett.
Yes.
Alderman Einmann.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Steiger.
Yes.
Five yes, zero no's, three absent. Bill Number 4559 now becomes ordinance 4481.
Okay. Thank you. Move to new business. First item will be the approval of the low bid of Bales Concrete LLC in the amount of $62.83 per linear foot for the individual property owner concrete sidewalk replacement project.
A little discussion on that, Happy?
Yep.
Is that a typo, or was there a misunderstanding that there was that much difference?
The.
I noticed that, too.
The higher contractor said they just thought they would put in a bid, and Bales felt that his number was accurate. Now, Jokers wasn't at the opening, but Bales was, so he is fully aware of what the other bid was and felt confident in it.
And how many linear feet was that?
I don't know. That's why we're doing it by a linear foot, because we don't know yet what it's going to be on each property, because it may not be a full sidewalk, but it may be the full length of the street as well. So we're looking at charging it by the linear foot, and this is for the tear-out price as well as replacement.
And then our ability to be able to recover that is limited?
Mm-hmm. It's a lean on the property. Or they can pay it, the homeowners can pay it, because I've, you know, we've now bid out the price, and this is probably maybe the best some people are going to get.
So how will that actually come down, then? I mean, we just show up one day, or our contractor shows up one day and starts tearing out a section of sidewalk, and?
We will talk to them prior to that, to let them know that, you know, time has run out, and we're going to, yeah, we're going to end up having to show up at their property and start tearing out the sidewalk and replacing it.
Will they be getting a letter?
They've been getting letters.
I mean, once the work is done, stating how much, and are we willing to work with them as far as payment arrangements?
Yep.
Because I know on other properties where we had to take action, we allowed them to make payments and.
Yeah, one thing that's been, that David and Gene have really been trying to work with the homeowners, they even want to go out and walk it with them first, just to kind of show them what we're talking about. But now that we have a price on what the linear footage will be, then we can give them a price of what we think it's going to be to fix it, within a certain amount. If they start digging in and they get into bad soils, then they'll have to build it back up, that'll cost extra. But yeah, now we can give them at least a hard price of what that is.
Are there any of these that are in contest, or it's going to be?
I don't think so. Are there any that are contested? Contested properties?
Contested as far as? As far as they're doing work, they're not going to get confronted by the property owner because we're on the property.
Well, then, you know, we'll wait to see what happens in that case. We may have the police department at least show up at the beginning, or try to work it out with the homeowner or property owners, and let them know what we're doing. And if it does become, if they do state at that point they're not going to let us on the property, then we'll go to the next, you know, decide what we want to do next.
So what are our options, then?
I would prefer to talk about that with our attorney.
Right.
In private.
I would just hope this could be a friendly situation and not a confrontation where it gets out of hand and bad publicity for the city and everybody involved.
And we agree. I think David and Gene have done a pretty good job with a number of letters, contacting people directly, and this past month they've called people that they have sent letters to to say, if you have any questions, if you want us to come out and walk it with you, if you want to see what we're talking about and why we're doing this, we'd be happy to come out and talk to you. And I think we've had a few people that have taken us up on that offer, and we have some folks that have also now signed up for the reimbursement, and they're going to be doing their sidewalks.
We had two additional properties coming today for the reimbursement program.
And even though we've identified these, so we haven't identified any amount of linear footage?
No, not yet.
Okay.
We've offered, and we have one out of properties and identified footage, yes, visually, not in a letter.
Motion to approve. Second. Okay. Motion and a second. Any other discussion on the topic? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Take us to the next item, which is approval of the low bid of Dunsey Construction in the total amount of $349,541 for the City Hall boardroom remodel project. Second. Motion in a second. Any other discussion on this topic? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Move to the next item, which is approval of the low bid of Jokers Incorporated for the Water Main Improvements Project Number 23-9450.
So with this, you have two options. We budgeted $315,000. So I requested from Dave Van Leren, TJ Garbs is here with Cochran, to come up with a breakout of what we thought were the necessary streets, and then we can not do the other streets and not go over our bid amount. So option one comes up to $234,053.30, and that's Ninth Street, Rozier, and Claymont. And then the, if you want to accept the second option, that's would include those three streets as well as all of Oakwood Drive. I'm sorry.
Well, that has to be Oakwood.
Yeah. Then be a portion of Oakwood Drive, be $342,604. I'm sorry. Yeah, it is Oakwood Drive. So it's a full Oakwood Drive from Hartwood over to the B Street. I keep forgetting what the name of it is.
Brookdale.
Brookdale, thank you. I blank out every time. I mean, costs aren't going to go down between this year and next year, but again, we're going to be over budget, and the board would have to approve that extra expenditure.
Got a question for Steve while he's here. Left public chief. There are any that Happy's talking about leaving out, I mean, has that been a problem area, or have we had a lot of?
We've had a, we've had a few leaks over in that area. You're talking as far as the water or the?
Right.
The water, we've had a few issues over there, but the water mains in that area, in that neighborhood, running the yards, not the street.
They're just four-inch cast iron instead of six-inch PVC, so we're looking at making an improvement over there.
Right.
Whereas Ninth Street, Rozier, and Claymont, it's a short run, so that's why we included that. But Rozier and Ninth Street definitely need to be done.
So I was just kind of curious if we hold off on doing that, I mean, are we going to cost ourselves more in the long run, or is this better now than later?
Things aren't going to get cheaper, but, I mean, we don't want to spend everything beyond what we have, so.
I mean, it's quite a bit of money. I'd be in favor of staying with the bid that's within what we've budgeted. I think I am, too. I mean, if it's not a, something that's breaking every time we turn it around, that it's caused us, you know, additional costs and stuff like, I mean, I know it's not going to get any cheaper, but, you know, that's a big chunk.
So if you want to do that, make a motion to approve.
Did you budget, I'm sorry, the 234 only, or was there more than the 234?
Yeah, we budgeted $315,000.
$315,000.
So you're talking about?
The 234 plus option one is under the $315,000, correct, Happy?
Mm-hmm.
But not with option two?
Right. Option two, but it's at $342,000. Yes. It's a long run, that's one reason why. Long run, and we have to bore it under, we have to bore under Brookdale and Oakwood at that intersection, so that increased the price, so.
So you're about $27,000 out of what we budgeted for the second option to go with the extra 900 feet of Oakwood?
Yeah.
You're going to pay it this year or next year?
Do we know where that $27,000 would come from, with where you funded this?
It would just be out of reserves that we had in the water budget.
I move to go with option two.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to pursue option number two, which would be the $342,604 bid.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
We're bringing all the board members out here.
Okay, we'll move to next item, which is Bill Number 4560. This is a first reading for an ordinance approving a special use permit for Jane and Dustin Martin that will allow guest lodging at 495 Jefferson Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That will take us to a first reading of Bill Number 4561, which is an ordinance approving a special use permit for the Knights of Columbus Council 1037 that will allow a four-foot by 10-foot monument-type, internally illuminated, changeable sign at 600 Market Street in an R2 general residential district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Takes us to Bill Number 4562. This is a first reading for an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the city of St. Genevieve for the fiscal year 2023 budget relating to various revenue and expenditure increases.
Motion to approve.
Second.
That was Eric?
Mm-hmm.
Was that Alderman Bennett?
Yeah.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Move to a first reading of Bill Number 4563, which is an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve approving a 12-month lease agreement between the city of St. Genevieve and H&amp;M Goldenberg II LLP to lease 44 Plaza Drive as temporary offices for City Hall.
Discussion?
Yes.
Just, I mean, are we locked in for the full year lease? I don't know, we talked about that the other day, but is it month-to-month after the?
He's told us it would be month-to-month, so if we don't do the full 12 months, we don't, we won't pay for the full 12 months.
And that's in the contract, I guess?
Yeah, the initial term, I thought it was six months, I think.
Yeah.
And then it's month-to-month after that, but the rate?
Yeah, six months and then.
Is the yearly rate, I think.
It shows both the monthly and the yearly.
Right.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Any other discussion on that topic? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion for a second reading.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for a second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. This is a second reading of Bill Number 4563, which is an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve approving a 12-month lease agreement between the city of St. Genevieve and H&amp;M Goldenberg II LLP to lease 44 Plaza Drive as temporary offices for City Hall.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Steiger.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Einmann.
Yes.
Alderman Bennett.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Five yes, zero no's, three absent. Bill Number 4563 now becomes ordinance 4482.
Thank you. Move to first reading of Bill Number 4564, which is an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Vern Bowman Contracting Company of St. Genevieve, Missouri for the Blaine Street Water Tank Removal Project in an amount not to exceed $35,240.
What a bit of discussion there. Was there a timeframe in that contract?
I don't believe we had one set, because there are a number of tanks to be done at the same time, I believe, with the water district.
It does have time, August 31st.
Okay.
Yeah, it's got August 31st completion date.
So have we secured the necessary egress and ingress there to get in to do that, or?
Until we get this contract signed, we haven't pursued anything, yep.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Move to a first reading of Bill Number 4565, which is an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Bales Concrete of St. Genevieve, Missouri for the individual property owner concrete sidewalk replacement agreement in an amount of $62.83 per linear foot.
Second.
Any other discussion on stopping? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Move to a first reading of Bill Number 4566, which is an ordinance amending the purchase of new state-approved mobile radios for the fire department from Motorola Solutions Wireless USA.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion for a second reading. Second.
Are we in a hurry for?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah? Okay.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for a second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Second reading of Bill Number 4566, which is an ordinance amending the purchase of new state-approved mobile radios for the fire department from Motorola Solutions Wireless USA.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Einmann.
Yes.
Alderman Bennett.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Steiger.
Yes.
Five yes, zero no's, three absent. Bill Number 4566 now becomes ordinance 4483.
Thank you. Move to a first reading of Bill Number 4567, which is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute a service agreement with cloud permit for the building department.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion for a second.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Second reading of Bill Number 4567, which is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute a service agreement with cloud permit for the building department.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Bennett.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Einmann.
Yes.
Alderman Steiger.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Five yes, zero no's, three absent. Bill Number 4567 now becomes ordinance 4484.
Thank you. Move to a first reading of Bill Number 4568. This is an ordinance amending the city of St. Genevieve Municipal Code of Ordinances, Section 715.050B, billing and delinquency as set forth below.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Any discussion on this topic? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Any other business?
Is something we had discussed, and I don't know if this is the type of thing that, but looking at a policy to award contracts to local vendors within so much of a percentage, is that something that we can work on, get it drafted and bring it before the board, or anything that the board is in favor of?
Absolutely. I've been told multiple times we can't do it, but I'm thinking there's, I'm thinking there's a way to.
The county?
Yeah.
I think they have a percentage.
I'd like to move forward with it.
You're going to have a difficult time, you could, can have a difficult time with it going forward as a, as a standard policy, because you're going to have a fiduciary duty to get the lowest and best bid generally. You can, you can take into account certain factors individually, especially if the business is close by, so you'd have a better response time for assistance, that sort of thing. I would prefer if, if the board were going to take that into account that you do it on a case-by-case basis rather than having just a blanket percentage policy because it's going to be harder to defend because they're just automatically giving a preference to a contractor just because of where they're located, and that is, it's going to be harder to defend, but you know, it's, it's not impossible to defend, but it certainly is hard because when you own the bills, you can get sued by the, the lowest bidder in a contract, and if it's a big contract, they would be entitled to lost profits for that job even though they didn't do anything, because you hired somebody else. And so, you know, I'd have less heartburn of it if it was a $10,000 project, you know, but if we have a $5 million road project and they're.
All the more incentive to hire a local person, though.
I'm not debating the merits of it, I'm just telling you that there's, there are legal issues because if you have a large project and you have a set percentage, say 10% range, that 10% of a $5 million project is going to be high dollar difference and it's going to be a real potential loss for the city, and just to adopt a policy, a blanket policy is a real problem.
If we don't adopt a policy, a blanket policy, how can we set up a protocol that we, when we draft our bids, that it prompts us to look at that, you know, those local contractors? You know, internal, what kind of internal mechanism can we do? Because we won't know until we get the bids from a contractor, correct?
So we send it, we make sure we sell it to the local contractors.
Correct.
So I think that's, you know, we're doing our due diligence in that respect.
Sure.
But we don't always have to go with the lowest bid, we can go with, on a case-by-case visit, or scenario with each.
Project.
Project we're working on, and if a local contractor is within reason of being, or you know, within a certain amount of being the lowest bid over somebody that's 500 miles away, we can still accept that.
We can't go back, though. We can't go back and award, can't change the rules of the bid and add in a preference at that point, correct?
Correct. But what I'm saying is that, is that, but as far as a firm preference, but you're going to want to do it on a case-by-case basis, and I know of no contractor in the city that I wouldn't hire. I mean, I don't know of anybody that wouldn't do a good job for the city in all aspects of it, but I can envision a situation where you have somebody that's not a good person, and you all know that's not a good person, and they don't even come in as a low bid, but you're going to be obligated to take that person who had a higher bid just because they're in the city. And so that's the opposite side of that same argument, and I'm not, I'm not debating the merits of whether you should have a preference for local, I understand exactly that. From a legal perspective, a case-by-case analysis, based upon the bids and past performance and future expectation of performance, your, your local bidders tend to have more business with the, with the city, and the administration's going to have more information presented to the board to justify hiring somebody locally because they're going to have that information. You make that part of the minutes in the discussion and the decision-making process, and I can defend it. If you just have a blanket, okay, if you're within a percent, this, this percent, it's going to be far less defensible and much more likely for the losing bidder to sue us because they're going to see that as unlawful and they're going to see that as unfair disadvantage for.
So go back to, so on the day of bid opening, then, or the day of discussion of the bills, then you're saying how can we protect ourselves a little bit more to award it to besides the table discussion, what were some of the other items that?
I'm not sure.
Well, you were talking about if we, if we don't go with the lowest bidder and we have that discussion here, because they're going to make a recommendation.
Correct, that's where, that's where, that's where I'd want it. I want some sort of presentation of evidence as to why you're, you're selecting a local bidder.
Okay.
Based upon the merits of the service provided and like the, the argument of the location and the employees being closer and less delays and all that.
How can we set up a procedure or policy in-house inside?
Well, that's how we decide what the best bid is. It's not necessarily going to be the lowest, but it's the best overall bid for what we're looking for.
I think you're looking for a guarantee that I can't guarantee, though.
No, 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 I just want a way that, because everyone that I've seen is always the lowest bidder, right? And so how, like, just recently, we had one for a small landscaping job, and the guy missed it by a hundred bucks, or I don't know whatever the number was, but, and it was an out-of-town person versus a, a local person. So how do we get the procedure for you to go through when you open the bids, because we're not here when you open the bids, that you can have that procedure where you go through and you bring it back to us, like, yes, this is the lowest bidder, but this is a local person, and I feel like, so how can we set that procedure up that you will review that and bring that to us on a case-by-case basis?
I just don't, we have a list of what we look at when we do bids, so we go with that, that list that, you know, is the most responsible and responding bidder. So in that case, we probably should have looked a little closer at what some of the specifications were, but we hadn't put them out that way. So that's, that's where it would come down to, is what we, what we put out for the bid process.
We're not going to know who, who's going to bid on.
So as an example, a couple of years ago, we did the police department, we had three bidders, and two bidders were at the meeting, and the not-low bidder was Jim Donsey, but he could, he said he could do the project in a quicker amount of time because he was local. He didn't, you know, he has people around here, he could, he could do it in, you know, maybe it was like six months, and the other contractor said nine months. So based on that, we said, yeah, we can do that and approve the local contractor because they're showing an advantage, but if they had come in at the same amount of time, there really was no, you had the low bidder, they weren't from here, they were from Jefferson County, but, you know, if, if you can also look at, you may be stifling some bidding because if you're just going to take the local person, then anybody else will not want to bid it, and then you're not going to have any true competition, so you have to be careful with that.
Just to be clear, though, if, if you brought a recommendation and they were to review the bids here during the meeting, they could choose a different bid if they wanted to. Would that be accurate?
But you would have to justify if you're going to go with something that's not the low bid, but it would be up to the board.
But, and that, the discussion is the, the documentation of our decision.
Yeah, and, and, you know, and you're going to hear me speak up at a meeting, because it happens on a fairly regular basis in, in my cities, and you're going to hear me say, okay, what's the reason, you know, what's the reason why you want to pick this person to try to supplement the record, and we'll have that in the minutes? And there's a lot of other factors you can look at in any contract, it's all within reason, and there's no hard, fast, firm rule on how you evaluate the lowest and best, except for, you're, you're going to have, I'm going to have a hard time defending the city if it's just arbitrary in the city or opposite. There has to be something that's more than that, and you don't want to tie your hands either for various reasons by passing an ordinance or adopting a policy because you're going to, you're going to find that you're, you're not going to like that lack of flexibility. But yeah, I mean, you're going to hear me speak up, and if, and if you're in a situation where you have these bids come in, that they're close, and there'll be a staff recommendation and you don't agree with it, I would suggest that you get a hold of Happy before the meeting. I usually call him the day of the meeting or the day before the meeting to say, hey, there are issues, and if he gives me a heads up, there's going to be a push to not take the low bid, we both know, okay, if that's going to be an issue, we have to be prepared for supporting the decision of the board essentially, right? And so you want to give staff a heads up, and certainly you want to give Happy a heads up, hey, I disagree with your recommendation or something, so he's not flying, and I'm not flying, setting up the meeting, and I think that's the best way to, to deal with is get, give him as much information as you can before the meeting, but a case-by-case basis, because the general is going to be the lowest, lowest best bid, and the most responsive center, the language is, and so you're going to want to have a reason, a reason, many reasons, you know, why you want to pick somebody else, because if you don't have a reason, like, I didn't even think about the practical side about not getting the bids from out-of-towners, but if you have just a hard, fast rule, you're going to get sued. You just are sooner or later because the contractors know that we're going to be on weak footing because, you know, they operate all over the place, and you know, this is, it's going to, you're a type for me to protect.
Not impossible.
Is the board allowed to bring personal experience with a contractor in regards to whether it be quality of work, timeliness, accuracy of bid, et cetera? Are they allowed to bring in that personal experience to the table for that discussion?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's nothing that's, that's specifically prohibited. It's, but it's dangerous for, for a couple of reasons. One is it invites personal grudges into the discussion, and it further invites litigation because, and you're going to make yourself a witness in the litigation, and they're going to ask, well, you voted against this because they screwed up your job, not because you thought they were a bad, or you know, bad contractor for the city, so you can, but you got to make sure you pick, and you don't, don't use it as, my cousin Joe said, this guy's a bad guy, you got to know it, because you are in trouble if you bring in personal experiences. It's best to have, my advice is, is based upon the bid and, and past work with the city is tremendous, because then you have a documented, successful relationship and automatic justification for hiring the same person, even if it's a little bit more, same entity a little bit more, because they have an excellent track record for doing a good job within budget, on time, and that is worth a lot, a known relationship. So that's what I'm, I'm really looking for, something the city.
And I guess, I get the spirit of sharpening your pencil, you know, if you don't get a bid because you're too high, you know, that, you should come in, but we constantly promote supporting local business or, or small businesses here to keep the cash flow here, so I don't see why.
Can we add another column to your matrix here, as far as maybe past contractor with the city? Have they done work with the city in the past, so that we'd be able to see that? I don't need to dig through everybody's bid, right?
Right.
But if we get this matrix here and it shows us, you know, it's got the name and address and bid amount, but can we also put if they're a past contractor with the city?
Yeah, but then doesn't that just give you one qualification? I mean, we have eight or nine different qualifications that we go through, and that's in the code, and we could put all those in the matrix. We put that because that's the basic, the basics of the bids. And I don't, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't think we've had an issue with not having qualified local bidders and having local bids, local bidders get the contracts. I don't feel like we've, we've, we've had a couple of occasions, and I know with some of the big water projects, we, we didn't have, we didn't have a local contractor, but they did a fine job, but that's, it doesn't seem to be as common as, as what everybody feels.
I've never looked at the bid documents, but I mean, do we actually specify for the lowest bid, or do we?
Lowest and best?
Lowest, I'm sorry, lowest responsive, responsible bid. So the responsive is that they have to include everything we request. Responsible is that they have performed well in the past, so we can't, we leave it open. We're not, you have to have done this and then done this. We're not that specific, but we leave it where we, we can reject, you can accept reject, you can accept portions of a bid. We leave ourselves a lot of, a lot of wiggle room, but still, it does say lowest, so that's why we usually make that recommendation unless we feel there's something else. A cloud permit is an exact, exact example, is that is not the lowest bid for that, for that software, but the other, the other software couldn't do what we wanted it to do, so we went with this one, I made the recommendation.
All right.
We'll look into it a little more to bring something back.
Any other topics? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting. A work session to order. Look at approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
So Alderman Donovan with the first.
Second.
And Alderman Stagger with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We'll move to work session item number one, which is in regards to the Progress Parkway property. We have a few guests here.
So we talked at the last work session with the IDC, they recommended that we have Mark Spikerman from Gilmore and Bell come in and talk to us about the past TIF that we had, and I think there was some other potential conversations that he wanted to have with, or could have with this board, so we invited him to come tonight and, and talk before the board, so, Mark, it's all yours.
Can I just briefly address the council? Again, I'm Tom Kind, president of the IDC, we have Gary Nelson, and of course, you know, Randy and Mark here tonight. I do want to start out by saying thank you to the council for the last meeting, I know it was like a marathon session, I appreciate your patience as we kind of went through a lot of information again for the benefit of the, of the new council and mayor. We left the last meeting with, with two action points. One was the, to look at the subdivision again, to look at cost for the Bosler extension, the loop, and then the stubs down towards the Valley Baseball Diamond. We got that information back from Smith and Company, so you have those costs in front of you, plus the map of what that would look like. Obviously, this part of the subdivision will give a great shot in the arm to several factors, like we talked about before with the safety aspect, but with also talking with several developers that have indicated interest along those streets that would be put in. So we're continuing our efforts to talk to developers, and our hope is that the city will work with us on some of the infrastructure dollars, that we can bring this to fruition. I don't know if you have any questions on the cost, again, those are just rough estimates, you know, there, there's a big number in there to go over the creek to get to the Valley Ball Diamond, that's just a huge contingency, and in talking with Billy Cobb, he said that he would hope that once they get to that point, those costs for that water, what's listed as water retention or stormwater, could be reduced to something similar for the other pieces that go into that, on the other stubs. So if you answer any questions on that, and then the other action item we said is that the IDC would get with Mark Spikerman to come here, he's done a lot of work with the city, their firm essentially does all the bonding TIF across the state of Missouri, they're the experts, they've, they've worked with this city and the county on many projects, and unless, again, unless you have any more questions for me, I'll, I'll turn it over to Mark.
My name is Mark Spikerman, I'm with Gilmore and Bell. For those of you who are, who may not remember me, I was here back in, I think, 2018 last for the amendment to the downtown TIF, but my firm has worked a long time in St. Genevieve and St. Genevieve County. We've done bond financing for the hospital and the community center and the city in the past, as well as TIFs and, and chapter 100s for wholesome and, and other projects. This particular question is, in projects, is really interesting because you're not alone. Twice this week, I got called from other cities, similar size to St. Genevieve, in different parts of the state, that are kind of trying to, to crack the. different parts of the state, that are kind of trying to crack the same nut. How do we, how do we get housing? We want nice, new, modern housing to, you know, serve workforce, to get people to live here. They think there's demand, they just haven't been able to figure out how to make it feasible. Where you're ahead of the game, though, to those other cities, is there is at least a tract of land identified, some preliminary work, trying to figure out what would need to be done infrastructure-wise. And so we're down to, you know, how do you make the deal come together? And that's, it's kind of where we get into the weeds, and it's financial, but it's generally going to probably take a few different sources. I understand, obviously, the land that we're talking about was purchased using TIF proceeds a number of years ago, that TIF has expired, and so there aren't any new TIF dollars available to do anything, unless you were to create a new TIF. But that property is there, it's a public asset, it can be applied for the purpose of economic development. And I've got, Tom and Randy and Gary had asked, you know, if I was aware of any instances where cities had contributed land for economic development purposes, so I just pulled a couple of examples. There's one case, about 25 years old now, from the city of Licking. They used city funds, they purchased land, they donated it for a state prison. You may say, well, the state prison's government, that's fine, but the city doesn't have the authority to run a state prison. City has the authority to do things like roads and sidewalks, and the court found that the city also had the authority to do things for economic development purposes. And in that case, in the city of Licking, the jobs that would be created from a state prison was an economic development purpose, and they were able to contribute the land for that. Recently, I personally worked on, down in Sykesville, they did a large industrial project for Carlisle. City of St. Louis, they did a, just a mega project for the National Geospatial Agency to assemble and clear almost 100 acres of land in North City, and contribute free and charge to the, to the Air Force who built the National Geospatial, who are currently under construction. And then in the St. Louis County suburbs, I've worked a few times where cities have swapped land, not even Stephen trade, but for instance, the city had a public works facility or a city hall that was on, had frontage on a commercial road, and they were redeveloping that area for retail. Well, that frontage road, that frontage property is worth a lot. Swap that out for property that's not frontage, that would be sort of honestly better suited probably for a public works facility, but not the same, same value. And the purpose there, of course, is, same thing we do TIFs for, it's economic development, it's light remediation. Any questions regarding that? And feel free anytime to cut me off. Tom had also asked that I make sure that everyone understands how the, how the TIF worked in the first place, which TIF is funded from two sources. Incremental property taxes, which are often abbreviated as pilots, or payments and move taxes. Those taxes are taxes that grow because of redevelopment. Sometimes it's just inflation that grows it, sometimes it's redevelopment, but those are taxes that would otherwise go to the taxing district. So in a way, you know, the school, the county, anybody who imposes a property tax had a part in contributing the money that purchased the subject property. The other source for TIF is what we call ETS, or economic activity taxes. Those are sales taxes, city-county sales taxes, same thing. The TIF Act gives the, if the city approves the TIF, it's the city that administers the TIF. County collector and the county assessor, they have roles in getting the money to the city, but it's ultimately the city's responsibility to administer it. In this case, the city did administer it, they'd used some of the proceeds, they purchased property, and it was not ever redeveloped. Gary, what was it, it was supposed to be an industrial park, right?
It was originally.
Yeah. It obviously never became the industrial park. So there's a, you end up with a, where we are today is sort of a legality versus fairness area. Legally, it's the city's property, right? They can do what they want, but fairness-wise, you did have all the other taxing districts contribute money toward the purchase through the operation of this TIF. Yeah, any questions regarding sort of basic TIF operation? And again, just to reiterate, obviously, this TIF is over, we no longer operate under the TIF Act here. It's, it's what's, what we're doing here is probably what's before you on those examples. It's, you've got to operate under a public purpose, it's an economic development purpose as a city that is a valid municipal purpose. To assemble, to do this project that we're talking about, to get this infrastructure in place so the property is developable for residential use, we've got to come up with a stack of money. When we do project finance, we call it a capital stack. There's probably no one single bullet that's going to fill that whole stack up, we're going to have to do layers. You know, obviously, if the city were inclined to contribute land, that's obviously a big, big piece. I understand the county has some economic development funds. There are other tools available, including special taxing districts and user fees or special assessments. You could do a new TIF if you wanted. And then you may have grants or other sort of city and county contributions, but ultimately, you've got to get everything together to be able to install the infrastructure, to develop the land, in which case, ideally, we'd have residents move in, people build houses, people occupy houses, people pay taxes. Those taxes then generate revenue for the city to another school district, school district county to preserve its operations. Any, you know, any questions or any thoughts, anything I can help with? Yes?
This first example that you got up here, obviously, this was contested in court.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know who the BURCS is, but I guess it was somebody that contested this in court, but was any of these examples, was the property ever acquired through TIF funds and stuff, or did it?
The, in some of the land swaps, they've been done as part of TIF projects. One I can think of with the public works facility was a TIF project, and I can think of another one that was a city hall that was a TIF project.
Was it classified as like blighted, or economic development, or like, did it have three or four classes in it?
In, in a TIF, there's a blighted area, a conservation area, or an economic development area. The two instances I'm thinking of offhand in the suburbs would have been blighted or conservation areas. The, the National Geospatial Agency was not a TIF, it had, as you might imagine, for a project that large, there were lots of sources going in, including a special law under state statute, but that dealt with financial aspects, not land aspects.
You spoke of like a special tax district?
Mm-hmm.
How does that differ from a TIF?
In, and we see this a lot in suburban areas in St. Louis, and then starting to get more into the ex-urban areas.
Into the what areas?
Ex-urban, which would, you know, we've got one, I got a call recently about one in Warrenton, which is, you know, probably 60 miles outside of St. Louis. The, in, obviously, a developer could just charge more for land and recoup costs that way. They'd have to obviously find a buyer, and capitalism would work its magic. But one way they've done to keep land low, land costs low, is to create like a community improvement district that imposes a special assessment. And so then each, each year for the next 20 years or so after the house is completed, that owner of that property is paying an assessment that can go, then go and either reimburse the developer directly, or pay off bonds that were issued to fund some of the streets and sidewalks and stormwater.
So it's a government-funded HOA?
That's a, that's a really good way of putting it.
So, Mark, with this, I'll refer back to this BURCS versus the city of Licking. The city purchased this land and donated it, how did they fund the purchase of that land?
I think they just used whatever available resources they had. It wasn't a special tax or anything, it was perhaps even just cash on hand, I'm not entirely sure. Sure.
And in the city of Sykesville, they already had?
The city of Licking probably wasn't 100, how many acres was it?
It didn't say?
Might not have been that expensive, wasn't it, 1998?
But moving down to Sykesville, they contributed 124 acres.
Yeah, they had owned that land for a while.
Right. So where did any of these cities have to actually contribute, you know, money somehow and stuff to fund? I noticed the city of St. Louis spent $100 million on the whole project and stuff, but just kind of curious where that $100 million, how they funded that, was that a bond issue, or was it?
Yeah, so they, in the city of St. Louis, there's a local earnings tax, a local income tax, and as you might imagine, 3,000 employees generates a whole lot of local income tax. So they bonded against that local income, future local income tax stream, and the state also agreed to contribute the state income tax stream. And so there was $100 million bond issue to, the proceeds of which were used to acquire, you know, almost 100 acres of property, demolish the homes that were, largely abandoned homes because it's in a very depressed area of St. Louis, acquire all that property, pull up the streets, pull up utilities, deliver a clean pad site to the Air Force so that they could build what's just a massive facility.
This just, our project just seems different because of all of these?
It is, and you couldn't, and when you look at the state law and cases, there's cases like the city of Licking case where the court ruled differently. And, and when I look at those cases, I see two trends, basically. One is, you don't like to call them activist judges, but case law evolves, it moves, and it's moving in a way that's a little more friendly toward an economic development purpose. Some of the older cases didn't quite recognize that. The other thing is, cases like city of Licking, cases that, there's a case that involved Bush Stadium in St. Louis as far as whether you could contribute public funds to the payment of a privately-owned stadium. Those, the governmental entities in those cases did their homework. They had studies that said, you know, this is, this is economic development, this will, and I understand that there's a study here in St. Genevieve that says that we need rooftops, rooftops will lead to further commercial industrial development in the city and county. But without that basis to make an economic development finding, you're just, you're just giving away money at that point. But if you've got the basis, you've done the homework, you've got support, that's when the courts say, yeah, you're acting within your authority.
But even in all of these costs, you know, and I'm just trying to see how this all comes together, and all of these costs, I mean, I see dirtwork, I mean, I see stuff for streets, I see stormwater improvements, seeding and mulching, I mean, basically, there's no utilities in here, so that's going to have to come from somewhere else. This is a parcel, you know, but I'm just under the understanding that if we, if we found a developer, we got with a developer, those were all on them, all of these costs, well, maybe not all these costs, but...
There's, I don't have that in front of you, but, in front of me, but I imagine there are line items on there that would not be within the city's authority to pay for.
Right. That's, was my question and stuff, but like you said, then it's...
It may be, it may be within a community improvement district's authority to pay for, it may be within county economic development funds to pay for, but it might not be in the city's purview. And so when we do the capital stack, you end up with a, okay, this portion of the stack funds these costs, this portion funds these costs, and you line up basically your sources and your uses, and make sure they comply with state law.
We, we asked Smith Company just to look at the roadway itself and those things that pertain just to putting the roadways in place.
Right. So is that going to?
Nothing related to individual lots for utilities.
So, in their cost assessment here and stuff like that, is that going to provide finished buildable lots?
Well, it...
With the exception of utilities?
It moves the costs of all, of the lots down drastically, if we're able to come up with infrastructure money to pay for the road, basically.
So they probably sell the grading, laterals?
There's grading in it, there's stormwater, road and curb. And I know we've, we've talked about just looking at some of the grants that are out there, there's things for walking trails and sidewalks, as long as they connect. So, like you said, we're looking at all possible options to take bites out of this, to make it affordable, so that we might tap into grants for this, where the county can actually go after the sidewalk and walking trail. Tap grant. Then we can look at economic development funds that potentially apply to the IDC and the county. The city might have some bonding opportunities to bond money to put towards the road and infrastructure, and I think, you know, what we wanted to make sure that the city knew is that, you know, you could donate the land to the IDC, you could do some things that, again, getting to that, the lowest cost possible so that we can build nice homes in the subdivision, and return comes from the taxes, and that's collected along the way.
Seems like a big deal to put all this together, and to get it in reality, a huge deal.
Well, again, I tell you that we've been working on this for over a year, we've talked to a lot of developers, we've talked to a lot of people that have interest in this. I think one of the biggest pieces that, that was brought to us is these smaller garden homes and sections of that subdivision, because we still want to be able to have opportunity for nice, single-family homes, but there also is a need for these garden homes for retirees that, you know, they move out of their bigger home in the, in the city, that frees up, you know, a home, and they have less lawn to take care of and maintenance on those properties. And every developer we've talked to say, once these start going up, they go like wildfire. And that's why they'd like to start this, and even to the point that we showed you, if you just took the loop, and you took the stub coming down to the valley, the road that would go to the Valley Baseball, and even if you extended Bosler, which we think would really be the shot in the arm for this whole project, that whole upper area that we reported to you last time, we believe we have developers that would come in, and one developer's looking at 34 individual units, 10 of those duplexes, 14 of the single-family homes. Talked with a Dallas developer last week that's willing on that piece that comes off of Parkwood, to take the first five or six lots there, and talked to another developer also last week who's been doing work out at Valley Springs, and they have interest in coming down off of Bosler to do some homes down that way. So essentially, we're trying to knock out one full phase, if you will, of this entire project to get, to get it ignited and moving forward.
I hope you don't take by my questions and stuff that I'm not in favor of it, but just 100% in favor of it. This is our one shot at growing, one shot. I mean, there's nothing even close and stuff, but just trying to, you know, how can we, I mean, how can we put an organization together with the county, with the IDC? we put an organization together with the county, with the IDC, and pull us all together so that we're all?
We, we do have a state law that allows it. Section 7220 allows cooperation agreements between cities, counties, IDCs, other entities for the, sort of the joint, jointly tackle a public purpose. And so you can, you know, we can rely on that statute to put something together, basic terms, how we get there, you know, what everybody's responsibilities are. And you mentioned earlier, you said, well, this sounds hard, this sounds impossible. It's, it's definitely not easy, right? I mean, that's why, that's why I got two or three calls in the last week from communities facing similar problems. It's gonna take, it's gonna take everybody at the table. It's gonna take everybody signing onto that cooperation agreement, each putting in what they can to, to build our capital stack high enough to get this project off the ground.
And I would add, you know, Gary was presiding commissioner when we first started this. And I can tell you, even when he was there, we were looking for all opportunities to try to tap into ARPA funds, grants, had the full support of the county. And Randy has just picked up the ball. If you've noticed, every time I've come here with the IDC, Randy has been present.
We're all in. We want to see it happen.
Oh, we're lucky we've got you all in. We just need to get that agreement going.
Yeah.
If you don't mind, I have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
I'm Mark Bishop. I'm the secretary.
Oh, yeah.
So we've exchanged either phone calls or emails over the years, I'm sure. First, I would say your firm is, is well-respected. You guys do great work. They represented all my clients one time or another as bond counsel. So I've nothing but the best, most respect to you guys. I, I just want to make sure that, I guess, we're on the same page, that the history of the cities obtaining of the property is really irrelevant legally, right? I mean, the fact that the TIF money was purchased the property and that, which was later then exchanged with Archdiocese, I mean, there's no, you're, you're talking about more of a morality or like a-
It's a basic fairness, not a-
Yeah, it's not, it's not a legal-
Right.
-argument that has to have any purpose. Because the, the TIF was for, as you said, commercial and industrial development. I mean, if we're gonna follow the original TIF plan, it wouldn't be for residential, right? I mean, I looked at the plan, it was for-
Right. The, the original TIF plan, obviously now 25 or more years old.
Probably closer to 30.
Closer to 30, did, did not envision residential.
Like a CID, the few that I've been, that I've known of, for residential development, it seems like they've always been really problematic because it's like a special assessment above and beyond the real estate taxes. And I know there was a really nasty one in Peeveley that the subdivision sat vacant-
Yeah.
-for so long because of special assessments.
So there's a couple ways, sort of best practices that go around that. One is, you don't want to overburden a property. You don't want to put in an assessment that's too high on it that it's gonna make nobody want to buy these things.
Right.
The second is, and there's difference, Peeveley used a neighborhood improvement district, which is different than a community improvement district. One of the, they, they both have their pluses and minuses. One of the things you can do with a community improvement district is you can keep the assessments extremely low until a property is developed. In Peeveley, there was a, an issue where when they didn't develop and you had a full assessment on it-
Yeah.
-it became, you know, very, very hard to, to work out economically.
Yeah.
But if you can keep that assessment low until, you know, there's a house on it and somebody's got a motivation to pay that assessment each year.
And then, then like, I really don't know the answer to this question. If you have a TIF, I mean, the TIF can't apply, obviously, TIF can't apply to property owned by the city. I mean, so there would have to be a transfer of this, the, the city's interest in the property, because you're talking about attaching from a financing. I mean, we're not collecting taxes on it because it's taxes of the city. So how would, how would a TIF work in, I mean, theoretically?
If you were to do a new TIF?
Yeah, like if you were to do a TIF to help finance the infrastructure.
If you did a new TIF, there, you know, there would be a future TIF revenue stream based on private individuals acquiring that property at some point, making it taxable.
Right.
And you, you would, essentially, you'd have a zero base. So everything new would be potentially a, a TIF revenue. And, you know, at, at that point, with a, with a TIF, even like the city's contribution, their, their purpose isn't for contributing properties the same as the TIF, which is remediate blight, remediate conservation area factors. We, we were talking out in the parking lot, we understand there's, you know, some underground mine shafts on the property that, that potentially could be a basis for finding blight. Yeah. And even if it's half on blight, I mean, I think they, they probably need to be remediated to some extent.
And I, I really don't know the answer to this. I'm sorry to put you on the spot. But how can you blight property that the city owns? I mean, can you, I've never heard of that.
Yeah.
So you can blight the city-owned property?
Yeah, ownership is not a-
Is irrelevant, is to the condition of property for the blighting.
Yeah.
But you still, you'd still have to, in order to have a TIF functioning, you'd have to have a transfer of ownership of the property.
You'd eventually need to get it into private hands.
Right.
So once there's houses on it, the city isn't gonna own the houses. They're gonna-
Right.
But that, that's the, that's the intent, is that, you know, you eliminate blight through redevelopment. And when you redevelop it, you, you get it into private hands, you get it into-
These examples that you provided are all mainly transfers between public entities, intergovernmental agreements. What we're talking about here is, is intergovernmental agreements to a point, but, but it's also for some private home. I, I don't know how, how would that-
Well-
Do you have a concept of how it'd work with a residential subdivision development? Because I just don't have.
I mean, I, I think you would have, you'd probably have the, the property transferred to the IDC, and then the IDC would work with developer to, and maybe one of you guys can jump in here, but maybe phase it out. As, you know, developer one takes the 34 units, transfer that piece over to them so that they can start to, you know, they'll have to get construction loans. They'll have to have mortgages on the property.
Right, right.
And then, you know, maybe developer come, two comes along with another 50 lots, you transfer that piece out. You wouldn't, well, at least my recommendation would be, you wouldn't give it to any one private individual in the whole unless you were absolutely certain they had the ability to, to redevelop it all very quickly. It seems like it would make more sense to phase it out in chunks that people can, you'd expect to, people could reasonably develop in a, a near term.
Well, we probably don't have the demand for 100 lots in the near term either, you know, so.
And that would, you know, if you, with the phasing, I mean-
Yeah, yeah.
Protects you against, you know, we hit a recession and things slow down for five years.
So like, if the, if the city were to build the roads, like especially the Boslar extension, the obvious public purpose, putting a road over the city-owned streets, I mean, the city-owned property, there's gonna be no legal issues with that. But how, how would you envision that, that if the city doesn't have-
$1.70 million.
$1.70 million dollars to do that now, how would you envision, you know, that, that being structured? I mean, obviously, you can get grants. I mean, if you get our engineering firm can, can apply for a grant on their behalf and try to get matching grants for any street extension. But, but I mean, do you envision, there's a scenario here with this financing in any way, that the city can somehow figure out a way to recoup that?
Yeah, I mean, the city may need to bond, right? Get some upfront funding. And, and the CID assessments could, could play a part in that as well as a repayment source for those bonds.
Is that something that would require a vote?
The, the CID, because there's, there's no one living on the property right now, can be put in place through, a little awkward because the city owns it, but the city can petition itself to create a CID. I've seen that done a few times.
So you're talking about some, but you're, but it's creating a, a debt of the, of the city. Is, is the CID exempt from the constitutional requirement of additional indebtedness?
In the NIDS, the neighborhood improvement district scenario, it is a debt of the city. In the CID scenario, it is not a debt of the city.
Even if the city owns the property, subject to the assessments?
Yeah. Well, one, we would probably exclude city-owned property from the assessment. Because you could, you-
We'd have to transfer it first, is what you're saying.
Right.
So it's a chicken and egg thing.
What I've seen done before is, you know, say, say you've got bonds outstanding, you, you've issued a million dollars of bonds to pay for these streets, and you've put in place a CID with assessments. In the CID statute, you have a lot of flexibility on classifications of properties for assessments. So you, and you've got a, and in this case, we bonded a million dollars for a road, which you said is easily within the city's purview. You know, the city builds roads all the time.
Sure.
The city can contribute any money it has to the repayment of those bonds that were issued for the payment of roads. So it doesn't, they don't have to assess themselves. And then the CID assessment classification can be set up where governmental-owned property assessment is zero, privately-owned undeveloped property is 500 bucks a year, privately-owned developed property is 1,000 bucks a year.
That's paid off, right?
Yeah.
But it would require us, so it feels like, if we're just gonna, like right now, put the road in, and then work out the details on how to transfer the property to some other legal entity, we wouldn't really have an option to do a CID or a CID or a NID because we'd be obligated to pay the debt because we own everything. We have to transfer everything first before we spend the money in order to get reimbursed on the bond, right?
You could-
Or we can go to the vote of the people and make it a, you know, a bond.
You could also go to the vote of the people, do it a general obligation bond.
Right.
That is a, you know, a super majority of the, of the electorate. So that, that's always an option.
Right.
But if you have, if you're able to, to, you know, look at your budget, figure out what, what you could pay a year to support this, that money can just, we can do a bond financing where that's subject to annual appropriation, and you just contribute an annual amount each year.
All right. Sorry to take up your time.
No, very-
And you weren't having to pay him. I thought it'd be good. Go ahead and get it. Got a little some questions. Thank you. I appreciate the information.
No, and like one of, as an example, little bit different example, but the city of Herkellanium, when they did some improvements to McNutt Road, there's a, you're familiar with McNutt and I-55. There's a traffic circle now there on one side of it and some other improvements that go down. The city did a financing, a bond financing, and they created a CID. In that case, the CID covers commercial area and does a sales tax instead of a special assessment. But, but the city and the CID entered into a cooperation agreement that said CID's gonna contribute all its sales tax to pay off the bonds. And anything above what the CID generates, the city has to pay. And so that's been in place now for 10, 12 years.
Mark, I don't know a lot about bonding. I know we met with a gentleman one time, but if we transfer this property out, either in parcels or as a whole, like to the IDC and stuff, but then we're still on the hook for those improvements. I mean, just a bonding company, look at that as collateral or basically just based off the city's ability to?
There's, there's, the answers could be all of the above or none of the above. It's, however we would structure it. So we can do, you know, if you did a CID and you did have assessments, the, once, once there is an assessment, like once it's in private hands and an assessment is imposed, that is a foreclosable lien if they don't pay. So there, you know, if you, somebody didn't pay, you foreclose the lien, you get the tax sale proceeds, that would, those proceeds would then go pay off the bond. Otherwise, you've got city's credit rating. Sometimes we call them moral obligations, but a, an agreement under that cooperation agreement, like Herkellanium did, to just, we're gonna pay whatever needs to be paid. That's their, what we call, again, shorthand is the moral obligation. It's not a, it's not like a general obligation bond that has your full faith and credit. It's just a promise that we're gonna pay every year. We're gonna budget and we're gonna come up with the funds.
Mark, you, when we were talking outside, you had mentioned that there's, for the CID, if I'm following, that, that there would be an abatement of taxes to the homeowner and then they could-
Yeah. What, one thing you could do, and we've seen this in a few places too, it's economically very similar to a new TIF, but it's, you get there a little bit different way, is, is using the TIF statute, you rely on one of the tax abatement statutes, abate taxes. So if you, so say a house would generate $2,000 in taxes, abate $1,000, impose a $1,000 CID assessment. Homeowner ends up paying the same $2,000 they were gonna pay anyway, but 1,000 of it is now available to the CID to, to pay bonds or pay for infrastructure.
So who would that go to?
Or go back to pay off that, that bond.
Yeah.
You know, and it's tax money we didn't have.
Pay off the bond.
And then, and then you, you kind of avoid the problem of making the burden too much on any individual property. You keep it, you know, kind of market rate for the homeowners.
Sounds complicated, but it sounds like it's done.
Every day.
All, all these pieces have been done somewhere. Maybe not in the same order we're talking about here or together, but, you know, we, we draw on pieces that we learned from, from other parts of the state, try to get them together to solve this puzzle.
So you've been involved with the financial numbers with other places that's done this?
Yep. And if, if, if the city is, is serious about like looking into bond financing, I know, the city worked with Piper Sandler, Piper Jaffrey as a FA firm in the past. Yeah. They'd be someone you'd want to talk to too.
Yeah. If we were looking at another bond issue of a, a bunch of money to fix all our streets, so this is-
Yeah.
-adding to the fold.
I mean, you can, honestly, you can roll that all into this too. You know, save, save some transactional costs.
Street, car and parking.
So what's the next step?
Well, I, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to-
The next step is, you know, as far as the council goes, is which way would they, how would they like the IDC to participate in this, in this development. The IDC is willing to step up and, you know, do whatever we can to bring the developers in and help manage the project. I mean, IDC has, we have nothing to gain from this. We're just trying to help the city-
Right.
-and the county grow. So there's, there's nothing that the IDC benefits in any way from this. I think we've shared with you before, the IDC is willing to put some money into this. We've already made it available to builders that if the IDC can pay interest on their carrying costs for the building supplies. And we're just trying to get the lowest possible cost so that the builder can come in and build homes and build spec homes. And they have no costs really until, well, they got their labor costs, but they're not gonna have, pay for their building costs until they have sold, sold. So if we're not transferring a big dollar amount for the price of the lot, we're not transferring a lot of money to the burden of the house cost for the infrastructure, and we make it as low as possible, we feel that that's the incentive that's gonna, you know, ignite this subdivision to grow. And like I said, we've, even the developer we talked with when we first started, told us if we can, if the city's willing to put some money into this thing, they would have this- this too. So we haven't had a follow-up conversation, you know, if and when the city would say, we're going to provide the land to the IDC, you could work out the structure for this. You know, again, I think we're all on the same page, this is going to have to be done in phases. If we could get three or four developers to start on it, and who knows what else we could generate going forward with this, we'd work with the city on how the city would like to see this done. Does the city want these phases to be done over six years, 10 years? You know, those are things that we want to work with, and those would be things that we'd have to work with the developers. Of course, I realize it's going to take somebody like the IDC, working with the county to generate some dollars, working with the grant writers to, again, pick off some pieces. And we'll continue talking on behalf of the city if that's the direction the city wants us to go.
So this number that they came back with is 2.2, that still falls in line with the 5 million for the whole thing?
That, they broke it out in pieces, but yes, I mean, it doesn't include some of the utility work like you mentioned, but it does take care of some of the land work. And obviously, you know, we'd want to work with the gas and citizens' electric and water and sewer, those type of things. I know, and I don't want to get ahead of myself, but one of the things that Randy and I talked about is maybe there's some in-kind donation of utilizing dump trucks from the county, you know, the awesome stuff.
There's a lot of ways things can get done, you know. I'd just like to say in addition to, I don't really have anything profound to add to that, but just having been in your shoes and sat in a chair right over there for four years, I know exactly what's going through everybody's mind, and it's overwhelming, and we always face the same problems, that there's never enough money to fix the streets and do the things we want, but I think the only way you're ever going to broaden the tax base is to do this. Or something like, you know, and to Mark Spikerman's point, it sounds like there's a lot of ways you can achieve the same end. It doesn't necessarily, you know, you have options as far as how you can piece this together. So, you know, I would just encourage you to keep looking at it, you know, see what you can do, you know.
And I think we've even shared some creative ideas that we've heard from developers in terms of the city charging X amount for a building permit. So where the city had donated the land and had money in infrastructure, but then charged back for a building permit, and you tack on to doing a creative CID where the city is able to get some tax dollars to offset the infrastructure, so that, again, we're pulling, you know, money from several different sources, but it's all essentially paying back the city for their infrastructure cost. And then you have to look at long-term. You know, this is the same discussion I've had with the county, the electric company. You have customers forever. I mean, they're going to be paying sales tax and property taxes, and they're going to be paying their electric bill, their water bill, their sewer bill, their gas bill, forever.
It's good for the businesses, they buy stuff here, you know, I mean.
I'd like to add one thing to this. When I first got elected 18 years ago, Bill Rogers was president of the Chamber of Commerce. He got a meeting at the community center, had Mr. Goldberg go on to the shopping center and go to the apartments down through there, and up there talking about economic development for St. Genevieve. And he said at the time, St. Genevieve will never have economic development until they get more rooftops. And it's been 18 years ago, and you look, what's happening in the last 18 years is not much. We got to have rooftops. Every business in the community, every gas station, restaurant, doctor, dentist, everybody's going to get influx in customers, tax dollars from both county, city, school district, the other eight taxing entities, it's good for all of them. It's a win-win for everybody.
And I realize we're throwing a lot at you. Brainstorm me some ideas. If you want us to come back and present to the council maybe a way this can be funded and really, you know, have financial people look at it, give some information from Mark on how a CID could be put into place, how we might pick off some of this through building permit costs, how we might pick off some of this and just put it online items, and just see where potentially the dollars would come from.
Yeah, they-
We're willing to do that, because I know, being thrown by all these ideas, it's hard to say, okay, well, we can, we can put some more thought into how the city could afford to do this.
I have a common question. First, the city can't charge permit fees that exceed the expense of the permits unless you have a vote of the people, essentially. If you're trying to do it for revenue, it's a tax, and you have to have a vote to authorize permits above the expense associated with it, so it's unworkable unless we have an election that people vote in a higher fee structure. If we have a CID, would the, if the city transferred the property to the IDC, would they be subject, their taxes exempt, aren't they? They wouldn't have to pay any real estate taxes, would they, until they transferred to yet a third party, right? I mean, I don't know. You do pay taxes.
We're taxed.
Yeah, so the real estate taxes won't even kick in until it's out of your hands and a third party.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to confirm this, I'll have to look it up later. It's been a while since I represented the IDC. Okay. So I think that's the, that's the real rub, that I'm trying to figure out how to structure it.
Yeah, but nothing happens till the IDC transfers the ground anyway, correct? I mean, so maybe some of the improvements.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm thinking about how the city can possibly, like, put in the road first and finance it, but if we transfer the IDC, the financing doesn't even start until the developers have bought the lots and developed, you know, either bought the lots or somehow in the contract with IDC have sold it to somebody private, because otherwise there's no real estate taxes coming in until we get to that third step. And so I'm just trying to think of how, where the money comes from, because there's going to be no taxes coming in from this.
So there's a chicken or the egg, right?
Yeah, that's what I was saying earlier.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you'd want to time a big closing in connection, you'd work with developer number one, and whether it be the IDC or the city, you'd enter into a parcel development agreement, what we often call with developer number one, where they, where they're basically committing to build these 34 units.
Right.
So that you do know that there is going to be at least some assessment revenue coming in. It's not risk-free, you know, there's a chance nobody ever pays their assessments and you've got to foreclose on 34 lots.
Yeah, and then you're going to have a problem with private entities buying it as opposed to the city, being able to get the property returned.
Well, cities have, and fund, aren't they?
It depends on how it's structured, you know, so if the city's involved in the CID, I don't know if we would or not, but you were talking about that earlier, then we're just back where we started, except we have a road and we don't have any way to pay it for it, except for out of the general fund.
So ideally, again, getting to like not overburdening the property.
Right.
There, when you do this parcel development agreement, when you transfer the parcels to this developer number one, they're going to take out a loan, they're going to take out a mortgage. Now we've got a mortgage entity, a bank lending. If the CIT assessments aren't paid, that, that bank now has a problem.
Right.
It can have its collateral taken away from it. So usually in those cases-
The bank will buy it.
As long as the land's worth something, the bank buys it. The bank steps up, pays the assessment.
That's true.
And then aside dealing with development number one, you're dealing with, you know, First Bank of St. Genevieve.
So is our next step to form this organization, to look at all the different avenues, or do we just do that pre-handing?
I think I'd like to see a good timeline as far as in what order all of this needs to proceed and what, at what point the funding has to take place, at what stage of the timeline.
I think we could, in connection with that, I don't think the cooperation agreement would be, at least my personal preference is that we write it in plain English, and that it, you know, clearly spells out things like timelines and milestones, so I mean, I think you could, you could start putting that together to, you know, lay out everybody's obligations and milestones.
That'd be a really good start.
Make sure everybody agrees to their respective roles.
To do a CID, how long would it take to put that in place?
If the city owns the property and the city petitions itself, not very long. Probably a month, month and a half.
Would there be any additional work to abate the taxes?
Yeah, if, if you did use the tax abatement model in connection with the CID.
Is that like chapter 100?
You wouldn't be able to use chapter 100 for this purpose, you'd have to use chapter 353, another chapter, but you would need to have CMO RPC or someone do a blight study.
What is that?
An analysis by a trained person who can say that this, or give you guys an answer whether this area meets the statutory definition of blight or not. And again, it's, we were talking outside, there is some potential basis for it, but it's not a slam dunk, right? It's not a dilapidated factory, that everybody would say, yeah, that's blighted.
But there are stormwater issues?
Yeah.
Correct, out there on that property, which he was telling me potentially qualifies, the underground mining and the vents.
It's there.
Theoretically, could be.
The fact that we had no abiders on selling the property, would that be considered blighting too, that we can't get it?
The way the blighting statute works is, there has to be some physical issues with the property, such as unsafe conditions, and then those physical conditions have to result in something that the statute refers to as an economic liability. So the fact that you weren't able to sell this, I think that, that is potentially an economic liability.
It's a definite sort of, I didn't want to say too loud.
Yeah.
What about the safety aspect, you're getting the first responders in, a more direct line?
Yeah, it could play a role.
Well, they address some of those.
I definitely appreciate all the work that you guys have put into it. I mean, I know that this is, this was a topic that I had on the paper, you know, years ago, so, I mean, I know that this is not something that's been over overnight. You guys have put a lot of time and effort into the end of that.
We've tried to do our homework and provide the council and the county with the hard numbers on what the benefit of doing this is. I think we all agree that, you know, we have people that want to live in St. Genevieve that can't find homes, and we all know that more people mean more business to everybody. And it provides more money to the city to continue to make the city better, improve roads and sidewalks and other needs of the city. So, like I said, the IDC has always been willing to step up and help kind of coordinate and work with all the parties. We're just trying to get it down, the price down, so that we can get developers to come in and get behind this project.
I think the county has been a partner with the city already due to a water project out there, so much appreciated.
I assume, and maybe as mentioned in previous meetings, I assume that there's not a developer that's willing to take on the whole project, put together a plan that would have us do some things, the county do some things, IDC do something, and have it, have that financing package presented, like I often see in other cities, especially in commercial development, where they're talking about TIP financing and all these, you know, CIT or-
So the one big developer we talked to had two questions. One, is the land free? And the second is, is the city willing to put money into infrastructure? So if I hear from the council that you give me that ability to go back to this developer and say, we've secured the land, we're working on a way to pay for the infrastructure, I might have a developer that will come in and just do the whole thing.
Wouldn't be much here.
Potentially, we could also solicit several other developers if we were at that level.
We've always tried to, any developer we've talked to, we've always said we have local people that have interest in building homes, and we're going to support all our local businesses and local people that want to be involved in this. And even we went to and said, hey, will you come in and do 50 homes? And then we've got somebody doing 34, we've got somebody doing five to 10, we've got somebody doing three or four, I mean, boom, boom, boom. So we've always taken that approach, that we're all for St. Genevieve and all are supporting St. Genevieve people and businesses.
We just also have to look at continuing the engineering on the property if we're going to keep going in that direction, because while we have at this point a sketch plan, and we haven't even presented preliminaries for approval or for P&amp;Z to approve or the board to approve yet, so you're still just looking at just a rough piece of ground, yeah.
Yeah, the next step, you know, I guess the next piece would be, as I understand it, looking at the cost estimates we got from Smith and Company to take it to the next step, we're probably looking at another, I think it's 50 to 80,000, I can't remember the exact number, but that really puts the whole piece together, where you have everything you need to build it. But if you remember early conversations we had, we didn't want to go too far because we wanted a developer to look at it, and they may want to change how the layout looks or do something different, so we didn't want to have all the work done and it just gets pushed aside because they're going to do something different.
So we want to work on the agreement first, and then look at getting a developer in, and then see what the financing requirements are going to be, see if they do want to make some changes. If that's the developer, if the board agrees to, then you can go forward in that case.
You know, after hearing that a lot of other cities participate, you know, in things like this on a lot even bigger scale, I'm sure some smaller, you know, the potential value of that property out there to me is incidental. You know, we've got to look long-term rather than short-term, and the long-term is much bigger.
Right, but it says the value is in the future, isn't it? Yeah.
And I would tell you this, that, you know, if the city says, okay, we will give the IDC the opportunity to shop it with the developers in terms of, if we get the land for free, what are you willing to put into this, this project? I just need to know how far my rope is on this, so I'm not making representations about this project, and that's not where the city is on us.
I think, again, understanding the timeline of at what point we transfer the land would be important. I personally am not opposed to gifting the land to the IDC, but, I mean, we need to do it at the proper time so that everything falls under the umbrella that it needs here as far as being able to put in the infrastructure if we get to that. But, I mean, I don't know if we need to vote our-
Speaking individually.
Opinion on that portion of it.
That's probably a good closed session discussion.
Yeah.
What you want to do with land and price and all that type of discussion, I would think that would be a good time to go in a closed session either today or some other meeting.
I think the other side of it from the IDC perspective, we don't want it to be transferred to us, and we don't have someone ready to, ready to push up on the ground here, so.
I mean, from the city's perspective, from the legal side of it, it'd be so much better for us if there's a developer that had a plan and was asking for specific assistance. We want this assistance for this road, we want this tax abatement program, that's what-
It's hard for, yeah, but it's hard for him to go out and shop for a developer unless he knows what the city is willing to offer, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
So the $50,000 lots are not.
They're tough to sell.
Right. Not for a quarter or third acre lot. That's not going to work.
That's not going to fly.
Yeah.
The key behind this has always been affordability too.
Correct.
And obviously, some of that is going to lay at our feet. How affordable is this going to be for the homeowner down the line? It is somewhat going to start with the city and the decision that we make. And I think the affordability piece is really important. That's why I think, you know, as far as imposing an assessment, I wouldn't want it to be above and beyond what a, what a normal tax bill would be because once again, you're eating into affordability. And that, that's really important.
So would this be an appropriate time to go into a close session?
So I think we could maybe come, we got the IDC here, but I'd like to move on to these other agenda items and then maybe come back to it.
Close session.
I don't know if we could ask the IDC if they want to hold tight.
I mean, I would prefer that you have that discussion just among the board. But you can invite whoever you want into a close session if you're talking about transferring land.
Got some people that's been waiting here for a while.
Yeah. But, you know, like I said, you can do whatever you want.
Do you want to move, so is that?
One of my, well, now, if we start talking about land prices and bonding, some of these things, I'd like to talk about it in a bigger picture, about some of our street repair needs, some of the storm waters, you know, some of the parks and things like that. So I'm not opposed to looking at bonding issues, but I'd like to talk in a bigger picture because it's not just, it's great that we're going to build this, but I want to talk about it in a bigger picture like we talked at the last meeting. So.
We're already teetering on an open, closed session right now.
Yeah, so we might not need the IDC here tonight for the close session, I guess is my, would be my recommendation is, we're going to probably need them here tonight.
Are we able to address items two and three on the work session and circle back around?
Work and make adjustments to the agenda. So that's all you're doing is just moving this.
As long as we have all of our questions answered by the IDC, I would imagine we can go on and let them move on. And I would be in favor.
I don't have any more questions for our guests.
Okay. And as far as the IDC guests, are you in?
I don't think we need them tonight. That's my opinion.
But you know where to find us.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, representatives from the IDC. Appreciate it.
Thank you for helping.
Okay, so Alderman Sager, are you wanting to move to?
Item number two.
Item number two, or you want to amend the agenda, or you wanting to move to?
We can, I can add a close session at the end. So I'd rather just stick with the current agenda.
So with the number of people that are absent from the board, do you think that'll be?
I think we need to start it. It's, we.
I do think the further we kick the can down the road.
Yeah. And I talked a couple of times, feel like it.
Okay, wonderful. All right. We will move to work session item number two, which is in regards to an issue I think that was brought to light from Alderman Bennett regarding some parking on, some parking or no parking on Jefferson Street.
Yeah, I had a resident call. I guess there's been a couple of accidents at that location, essentially stemming around school departing and kids trying to leave the parking lot and not being able to see the visibility being restricted because of the vehicles parked on what would be the north side of the road, south side of the road. So that individual has asked for consideration for no parking within so far of the intersection or from the Duberg exit.
Okay.
On Jefferson to allow for better visibility for exiting that parking lot.
Is it on the exit from?
From the.
The Valley parking lot on that exit there?
Behind the Duberg Center.
Okay.
The.
Same as the ball.
Same as the ball.
Okay.
How many spots would we actually need to eliminate?
Well, I haven't looked to see, if we had a code book, I don't know if that's already two hour parking anyways. If there's a parking restriction there now, you know, that might be a moot point. We could just enforce it otherwise. My, I guess on the flip side, the school is not necessarily willing to relinquish those spots, which of course they don't have control over now. But because of their parking issues, you know, they weren't necessarily in favor of eliminating parking on that side of the road. But I would like to see what kind of parking restriction is in place now. I don't remember if it's two hour.
We can't pick and choose who gets the two hour ticket. Are you saying just the ones closest to the Duberg exit?
No, I'm saying if that whole block is a two hour parking, maybe we just enforce that a little bit more stringently than we have.
How do you do that? I mean, you might as well make it no parking. If it's a two hour now.
If we just went from the desert to, would that be Third Street?
Third Street.
And just nothing on that side of the.
That was the original proposal. I don't think that the school was terribly fond of that idea. But there again, I mean, if it's a safety.
I bet it's one. I bet you it's probably five.
From the edge of the desert?
Desert. Then there's two more exits for the Duberg.
Well, I mean, both entrances take up ten, a parking spot there.
Are they parked on both sides of the street?
Yeah.
But the other side's not bad because there's no.
It looks like Jefferson is two hour between fourth and eighth, seven to four on school day. So not between fourth and third.
Okay.
But that's between fourth and eighth, not between third and fourth.
Right. So there's no, there's no parking restriction now there.
So you can just make it a couple of cars each way from that intersection?
I would say from the parking lot entrance more so than the, than the intersection at third.
Where are those other cars going to go?
I don't know.
Further and just create other issues.
I mean, my understanding is there's still parking spaces on that parking lot that aren't being utilized, but.
Is there a, I'm unfamiliar with how they do it. Does it go like seniority?
Lose some parking spots over here. So Valley's going to lose some parking spots over here.
Well, if it's first comes first service, space is open, that doesn't compute, but I don't know.
And I don't want to ascertain or speculate as to why they park there. But I know what's, the issues that we had when I was the chief here, they wanted to park in places that they could get out to their sporting practices faster or, you know, more for speedy exit than necessarily.
Pretty speedy through there too.
Yeah.
But the accidents were happening, people coming off of the desert out onto.
No, I think it's.
One of them was off the door, yeah.
Because you come off pretty high up off the desert, you come off, you have pretty good sight.
And for the most part, they want people to park there, the staff, because they close that through the day for the, for the playground. So it's really more just the high school kids that are parking on the street and in the Duberg parking lot.
Dave, you got something?
Steve, well, picture, it looks like there's no parking, I guess it would be east of the entry into the parking lot.
On the north side of the road.
Well, this is the south side. Yeah.
In between the two entrances of that asphalt lot?
There's a yellow line, which means it would just be from the second, the one closest to third. It means there's two cars.
Yeah, yeah. Say if we lose two spots, it'd be a good place to start.
I think it'd be good. So I guess that would be my recommendation.
That's just on the one side of the street?
On the one side of the street.
Give it an extra 10 feet on both sides. Now you, we can't put in lines to designate parking spots. I'd say to do that.
We could. But if that, most of that curb is already parked for no, or painted for no parking.
So we're only talking about those two spots, right?
Just that one. And that more, it's much wider.
I don't think anyone knows that car back there, do you? Why? Get people.
I'd say we start with the two. And if that solves the problem, then hopefully it's a dead to both of them.
I mean.
So on the south side of the street?
Yes.
And just take that no parking all the way from third to four?
No.
Oh, no.
From the desert to.
From the desert to third.
From the desert to third. But are they in between certain hours or is this all the time?
I mean, I would assume certain hours would be.
So like the weekend, Saturday, Sunday, no restriction.
Yeah, it would just be Monday through Friday, eight to, or seven to, seven to three or whatever.
Okay.
Well, you got basketball games and stuff like that, but that might be a problem too.
Yeah, I mean, how much does pink yellow, another 20 feet?
Well, if it's pink yellow, then it's going to become an issue all the time, right?
Well, most of it is already no parking.
Well, is it, is it?
Yeah. So it's just extended to two car lengths.
Yeah.
You're doing one car length on both sides or two, just between the desert and?
I would say just between the desert and Third Street, the two car lengths on the south side of the road.
Those two spots.
Try that and see.
I think it's overkill.
We'll try to bring a picture with that too. It'll show what we're talking about at full distance, so you have a better idea. For the idiots.
Any other thoughts from? All right. Work session item number three is in reference to an issue regarding some wrong way driving on Market Street. I know we have some guests here too, right? If you want, yeah. No, if you want, I know you guys waited patiently, so.
No, I didn't even know I was on item. I'm here for Dina tonight. But no, Merchant, it's terrible. There's at least five a day now. It was like maybe one a week and now it's easily four to five a day.
On Merchant's, on Market?
I'm on Merchant, but I know Nicole seems bad on Market.
It happens on Market as well.
I was under the impression it was Market and we were also talking about speeding on Main too, because it's getting really bad on Main. And, you know, four days a week now, when it's in season, which would be essentially March through October, if not November, to Arlington House, which is on Main Street, right across from Bull Duke, is open. There's educational programs, there's kids. Three of them almost got clipped Friday. I went immediately here, but nobody was here at the police department at the time. That's on me for not sending an email. But while I was talking to somebody this afternoon, I, I was so speechless, my jaw dropped. I didn't even think to take my phone out and take a picture. Somebody just rolled right through Main and Market, 20, 25 miles an hour, didn't even stop. Just went right through it. It's getting really bad there too. The wrong way driving is bad too, but I guess my bigger concern is like excessive speeding and motoring through there. And I know it's bad on Third Street too, when the school is down.
Yeah, it is pretty rough.
And for the record, that area that Eric was talking about, we had a guest, actually came about five years ago from Maine to see the museum. And they were leaving the Jacque Boardhouse, which is across the street. And I guess they were walking down and one of the Valley kids wasn't paying attention and hit the guy. He had to spend a few days in the hospital.
If I may, the, you guys know Robbie, I'm Jeff, work with him. I also live in downtown. And we're, the reason for our patience is because it is getting visibly worse. And we wanted to express our support for any ongoing cost effective solutions that could be used to help address the, not just the wrong way things, but also the speeding, particularly on Merchant and Market. It is also dangerous, like right at Second and, and Merchant where because of the historic house where it's placed, it's hard to see what's coming up the street. And people don't have to stop there, so they're not going to stop. And you get, you can have some close calls or else you're sitting in the middle of the intersection waiting to get through. But, you know, we get about 13,000 guests a year coming to our campus. And a great many of them, as Robbie points out, are families with kids. And, but also a great many of them are older folks. And, you know, these are people that not only are we supposed to be taking good care of, but they're also, they're our guests. And if bad things happen to them, it ain't going to be good for business in town. So we just wanted to come and add our, our voices to the discussion and express our support for whatever we can collectively figure out as, as a set of solutions to help address this.
I think on Main Street, what we have is an enforcement issue. And I think the police department can take care of that or try to do what they can. I think the Market and Merchant issue, and that's been an issue since I've gotten here, and we can only go with so many signs. And again, it comes down to an enforcement issue, you know, stopping people that are doing it. But like Nicole had some, you know, recommendations of putting strapping on the road, trying to see if that would break, you know, gain people's attention. There's probably other traffic calming type of improvements that we could do. But we just can't flat stop people from doing it, especially people that aren't from town and don't know the one ways.
Is it possible like over on, what is that, Pine? By the fire department there?
I don't know if it's wide enough.
To put something, well, if we don't put it in the middle of the road to show people that not to drive down that street, if we could put it, you know, next to the sidewalk or, you know, something a little more down eye visibility of the car instead of way up on a street sign. And I think the street signs are actually too close to the intersection because you're looking down the road, you're not looking right there. But have something, one of those breakaway signs that if it, I don't know, just something you see better coming in.
We can look at that. I'm not sure if I've ever seen one for a one-way intersection. I've always seen it for crosswalks. We'll see if there's something.
You can make one.
We'd have to do the painting at both intersections there at Main and at Second because.
On both streets.
On both streets.
Yeah. Yeah.
I personally think a spike strip or two would really solve some problems and generate revenue, so.
Like at the, like at the airport where, you know, lay down when you're going the right way, but you go the wrong. Yeah. I mean, we could even put signage there even if we don't have the spikes. Just make them think that it's there. What's that?
Or make them look like spikes.
Yeah.
I mean, Alderman Bennett, in your time, did you observe this as well?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And you think it's just more of a product of, I mean, it is, it's a little strange when you think you can turn one way there, you can, you can turn that way up at third.
Well, some of the problem is, we've done all of our wayfinding signs down there and they direct you up the wrong way street. They'll, they'll show, you know, the B store is up, up Market Street from, you know. So I mean, it's, it's, there's more than one problem here. You know, I don't think it's anything malicious. I don't think it's.
No, I think it's just confusion more than anything.
But, but yeah, I think at the minimum, better signage, maybe farther from the intersection and maybe some painting. I mean, obviously it's a downtown district and I'm sure not everybody's going to want a ton of gaudy artwork on the street telling people not to enter. But it's a matter of safety and.
For us at least on Main Street, would it be possible, I know once or twice you've given us like a flashing light thing or maybe we got it from the street department. Is, is that something we could maybe look into? Just something that even our, the flashing strobe, because there's already a crosswalk there and people just zip through and don't care anyway.
Right.
Even as people are walking, I mean, even we did that at our Christmas light thing that we did at night in December and people were just almost like it was a race or something.
Right.
Is there any chance that we could maybe get some kind of safety solvers thing that we could just put in the middle of the street? You know, some kind of flashing slow sign or something?
It'd be fine until they get stolen. It'd be fine until they get stolen.
And a rumble strip. And a rumble strip, so you can't steal it.
I will say, too, ever since Wood Funeral Home closed and that's just become like a questionable parking lot, like next to the public parking lot, a lot of people drive past that, they pull into the funeral home parking lot, then they come out and they go the wrong way coming up to then park. So we see a lot of that. So I don't, I don't know if you just need to, you know, paint like a giant arrow that's like park now.
Well, yeah.
A little more urgency would help.
Last thing I'd like to offer, I understand my happiest point about, you know, not wanting to go overboard on too many signs, but I have certainly seen where it has worked or at least helped a little bit that when you turn onto a wrong-way on a street, that there will be a sign facing in that direction saying wrong way. And then the other thing that's, I think seriously should be considered at Second on Merchant and Market would be making those intersections four-way stops. And not just because of that slows people down, but also because particularly on Merchant, there's the really significant visibility problem that some of us are dealing with every day.
And one of, I mean, one of those mirrors like they have at Seraphin would help, but we don't need more stuff crowding our, crowding our sidewalks, so...
So is the board be interested in where we stop at Second and Merchant and Second and Market?
I would be more so in favor of Second and Merchant than Second and Market. I don't know if it would be as necessary at that intersection.
The Second and Merchant, I think, makes all sense.
Yeah.
Because you can't see, the visibility is tough.
I know...
Throwaway stop, I guess is what it is.
The employees at the state historic site right there had complained for years and years about it and, because again, they're, they're really dealing with it every day. And I think it would be a good compromise between not wanting to have too many signs or maybe just...
Maybe we could get some Detroit Muriel there on the roadway, like you're saying, no parking. You know, make it, make it more, more ornate.
Can we install speed bumps on city streets or not? Because I'd rather see a speed bump than a stop sign.
You don't do speed bumps. You can't do speed bumps, they're actually a longer elevated type of...
You've probably seen them there.
Situation. It's, they're a little more difficult to maintain.
They usually coincide with crossings, pedestrian crossings.
Like just red, red and white paint there at the intersections in each of those intersections.
I would start with paint.
Do not enter, wrong way or whatever would draw the intersection.
Like the big arrows right in the middle of the street, you know, pointing in a certain direction. You know, and that's got popular on the interstates now, telling you if you're in this lane, you're going to go this way, in this lane, you're going to go that way, way ahead of time.
Yeah. So would that, so why do you think, painting either directional arrows or, or you know, do not enter or something on the intersections there and then the stop sign at, is it Merchant and Second?
Say that again, Ed?
Merchant and Second.
Stop sign?
A stop sign at Merchant and Second. And then directional arrows painted on the road would be, I would think, not too...
I like the directional arrows.
We start with directional arrows first?
And then it'd be like a tattoo, if you need to keep out of the stuff, you can just cover that and there you go, something else.
The rocker argument, you saw the wrong way. The other issue is the visibility on, that's not for, Merchant is not a wrong-way thing, right?
Merchant is a lot, yes. They don't make it very far. A lot of them will pull into the alleyway between the Horace and the Boots Store because you see their faces. I'm right there, so you see all their faces and they're like, oh, you know, and so they pull in, backed up and turn around.
I think painting at the minimum.
No, I haven't had one of those yet.
You just start with painting?
Tell me, Alderman Sager.
And you mean not a stop sign there?
I'm not in favor of the stop sign.
I'm not, but yeah.
Not enough.
Just, and again, his complaint there is pulling out the house that sits so close to Merchant Street, having to pull out of that intersection.
You have to inch your way quite a bit out there to, you know, see what's going on.
There are several of those, though, around town.
I know. You're going to get...
Let's just tear down the aisles. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
Pick it up, move it back.
Yeah, just move it back then.
Big arrows.
Let us do some painting and then we'll come back. Before we start tearing anything down. Anything would, would help, would be greatly appreciated and we appreciate you gentlemen listening to us. Know that we've had a long night and you're tired, so thank you.
Thanks for your patience in hanging out while we work through all those other items. Appreciate Nicole taking the time to write this letter. I think it was well informed. I think it highlighted what you were seeing on a daily basis. Hopefully not daily, maybe.
No, it's every day. More on Saturdays, but it's every day.
But, but no, we need that kind of feedback. Because this is going to be a problem as we grow tourism, right? We're going to have a lot of people are not familiar with our streets. And it is a little strange how that whole thing coordinates there, so. It's a good problem to have because it means we're growing. It means we're getting people into the town, so.
Okay. Move to go in a closed session for Murray and Stake.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to go into closed session. Could we do a roll call, please?
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Bennett.
Yes.
Alderman Hyman.
Yes.
Alderman Price.
Yes.
Alderman Sager.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to thirty.